This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees was previously called to order. The presence of a quorum has been established. Meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Monthly meetings of the board are designed to conduct the business of governing the school system in public. However, this is not a meeting to interact with the public. We welcome you as guests to observe and listen. And we do have a scheduled time within the agenda for the public to address the board. The board, the superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate success, review information and make policy decisions related to student achievement and the effective operation of Tyler ISD public schools. We continue the tradition of beginning our open meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and prayer. Reverend Mason?
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we are thankful that you continue to bless us. You blessed us to close another school year, another academic year, Lord. And we pray that you are guiding our children and keeping them safe from hurt, harm and danger. Bless the parents that they might have enough strength and time to spend with their children as they enjoy this summertime together. Bless us as a board as we continue to conduct the business of this school district. Bless us that our hearts will remain together and that our minds will be focused on the children and their academic success. For those who have lost lives, Lord, in the war and for all these things that are happening in our world, I just pray that you would bless our government, bless the leaders of the government, guide and direct their minds in the transaction of business. And may all that is said and done, Lord, work together for your good. In the name of Jesus, Sir Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
There's no action coming out of executive session, so we'll move to item number seven, approval of minutes. We have two sets of meetings' minutes to approve. Is there any discussion or corrections on these?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes for May 15, 2017, and May 16, 2017.
Okay, there was no discussion. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Dr. Nation, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is Lone Star Governance and our Continuous Improvement Process. We start with item A, which is our goal one, our Literacy Plan.
So as the public knows and the board knows, we're making a committed effort, targeted effort, at early literacy. As we know that that is the foundation for learning as we move along in life. With us today is our director, correct? Okay. Director of pre-K through three, early literacy, Stacy Penietta. Ms. Penietta?
First of all, thank you all for letting me present this plan. I'm very excited about this. It will be a brief overview because of time, so if you want to know anything else more in depth, we can talk, you know, at a later time or afterwards. I am going to start with just looking at some of the data from the end of the year 2016 and 2017. This particular data is cohorts, so the green data would be 2017, into 2017 MAP data. 2016 is the blue data, end of the year MAP data. So when you're looking at it across, you're looking at, let's say kindergarten, the blue would be second grade green. Okay? So that would be end of the year whether kids are reading on or above grade level on their MAP data. Our goal for end of the year 2017 was that students would read on or above grade level at the end of 2017 on their MAP data at 49 percent. For 2018, our goal is that students would read on or above grade level on their MAP data end of the year at 63 percent. And then our ultimate goal for 2021 is that students would read on or above grade level at 85 percent. And although we have made a lot of gains, you can see we have made some gains, we are still not meeting that particular goal. Which we can't, we do know that we can reach our goals based on research. If our reading instruction is grounded in research-based evidence and that we are identifying those students early for reading difficulties and providing that explicit instruction in those foundational skills for the students. So with this plan, what we are focusing on is that we are focusing on bundling our literacy standards and ensuring that we are spiraling those standards throughout the year so that students are achieving mastery, that we are providing routines in the foundational skills to ensure that the instruction provided is explicit and direct for our students, and that we're using a backward design so that we're looking at the assessment to what students need to know when we're planning those particular lessons. The plan focuses on foundational skills that our district and campus data tells us where students are struggling. So those foundational skills being phonological awareness, phonics and vocabulary. So we are, within the plan, have an intense focus on the instruction and providing that instruction daily for our kids in those areas so that when students are reading texts, that they are concentrating on those comprehension strategies and being able to comprehend using those six comprehension strategies. One of the ways that we are working to achieve the skills, we have developed teacher expert teams with teachers across the district at different campuses who are helping us work on the scope and sequence and collaboratively work across their campuses in the district to create a guaranteed and viable curriculum for our students. The plan focuses also on just the systematic method of teaching with an emphasis on that high-quality instruction, those routines, the access to resources that we have within our district and high-quality instructional practices so that students are being able to read on or above grade level by the end of third grade. So our district data does support the need for a focused and strategic plan for pre-K through grade three. The goal of the plan is that we are ensuring that every Tyler ISD student is reading on or above grade level by the end of third grade and is prepared for all their literacy, all the literacy expectations needed for them to be successful throughout their academic So research supports the need for systematic instruction in those five components, phonics, phonemic awareness, vocabulary fluency and comprehension, especially when we're considering our at-risk populations. The plan is a prescribed plan that supports campuses and the implementation of their literacy goals, provides an accountability piece that builds sustainability so that campuses can continue to improve each year. And also provides structured, a structured lesson plan, or lesson plan example here for each grade level so that we can ensure that all of the components of those early literacy and foundational skills are being taught daily within our classrooms. And I think you guys have an actual hard copy of this one. So the action steps within the plan ensure that the plan implementation is aligned to our state guidelines, that we're providing evidence-based instruction in writing within our reading, our writing workshop. The district plan for implementation, this is how we are going to support campuses within the district, and that is to work with our expert teacher teams with the alignment of our scope and sequence, to ensure that we are working with special ed and the bilingual department to coordinate our efforts and provide data meetings across the district three times a year where we bring campuses together to really dig into their data, look at their current data, discuss the outcomes and plan together. Our campus implementation for the plan, this is not a cookie cutter model. The plans can be based on campus, the campus goals that are set for their individual and identified needs. The campus leadership team will be developed that will help check for accountability, that will focus on implementation and the progress of the literacy implementation so that they can continue to improve throughout that year. And in conclusion, it's our fundamental responsibility to ensure that all of our students are reading proficiently. And with this plan, I feel like it's a great, it's a great start.
Thank you. We have questions for Ms. Penietta?
Ms. Penietta? If the students are not reading on third grade level or above, what plans do you have for the students that's not reading on the third grade level?
So within the plan, we have developed some safety nets for campuses so that there's a structured part of the implementation within the lesson so that students who are struggling will have that support. So if it's, so within the plan, we're providing ideas and resources for teachers to be able to scaffold for those students or to be able to implement intervention that would, that would close those gaps for those particular students.
Are these students pulled out during the school year and, you know, go to another classroom?
No, ma'am. No, the idea of the plan is to build teacher capacity so that teachers know what to do when students are struggling in the classroom and be able to provide the instruction for them.
I'm happy to see that we are focusing on pre-K through third grade. Dr. Crawford and I have been working with a community group that has that as a focus. I do know from having been an elementary principal, it is almost, I don't want to say highly unlikely, but it's very difficult if a child is not on grade level by third grade to be able to master on grade level for fifth and so on.
Yes.
So I think it's very important that our students are reading on or above grade level at each one of these grades and hopefully that will help our students before they get to middle school, high school, et cetera. Because it's just a cycle.
Yes, it is.
So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I have a question. On the example that you gave us, this is just, is this meant as just an example?
It's just an example.
Okay, okay. That's what I was.
It really is just to show how it's structured so that you can see how all five components are focused within that lesson and are daily.
Okay, so they will have like a list of books that they can choose from?
Yes, ma'am.
To use this model? Okay, that's what I need.
Ms. Penietta, the expert teams of teachers that are going to rework our curriculum, how long do you think that effort is going to take?
It will, it will be an ongoing effort throughout the year. So our goal, we're working through the summer, our goal is to have the first two, six weeks of done for each grade level and then to, as the year progresses, to stay a six weeks ahead each time. But yeah, it's a, it's an effort.
And that is not just in reading. It's going to be all of our curriculum district-wide as we try to get away from the old, I don't even know what it's called now, Teach Resource System? Yeah, so that's the curriculum we've been using, which morphed from something else. So one issue I think that we've had in school districts across the state is you haven't owned your own curriculum, that you've been waiting for that to be mass-produced for you elsewhere and then provided to you. So it does allow us to localize the curriculum as far as what we're teaching across the curricula, so social studies included.
So I'm assuming you've had a chance to review the curriculum. Obviously, you've been in the district before. Do you see this as a 20 percent rewrite or is this a 80 percent rewrite? Can you give us a sense of the scope that you're undertaking here?
Well, in percentage-wise, you know, I don't, I don't know if I can speak to that. What I would say is we're looking at making sure that all of those components are taught within the day, within that reading workshop or the writing workshop. What we are looking at, because the district has spent a lot of money on really good resources, I mean, we have really good resources here, so what we're looking at within the expert teams and the team that I have is looking at those resources and making sure that when we, we look at what kids are being assessed with, whether it's MAP or STAR, that the resources are going to get them where they can be successful on the assessment. So that's why I'm talking about working with a backward design, is really looking at what it is kids are being assessed and then taking inventory of kind of the resources that we already have in the district because we want to make sure we're also in some ways leveling the playing field for kids so that they have access to this, to that particular resource for, or everybody would have access to that particular resource. And then building this scope and sequence based, based on that and plugging in where we need to plug in to make those foundational skills stronger.
There's been some kind of reshuffling of campus personnel with the role of specialists and can you talk through just the three-tier model and clarity around who's responsible for which pieces of that on a campus level?
Well, before, we had, we had RTI teachers that would pull out and do intervention for tier two and three. And teachers would be, of course, are responsible for tier one instruction, which is for all kids, tier two instruction being for kids who are struggling and tier three being for kids who need intense intervention. The thought now is that we are, that teachers are going to do tier two intervention within the classroom, so within small groups. Which with this, with this particular plan, we are, we are also considering that. So really building within this plan a way to provide intervention for kids who are struggling within those classrooms so that teachers aren't struggling with, you know, fitting it into a block or planning for it or those kinds of things, that it's actually going to be built into this particular plan. And then tier three intervention, we think about tier three intervention being more of kids who are receiving dyslexia services, so they are pulled, they will be pulled out and kids who are, who might have special education services that might be pulled out or that that special ed teacher would be inclusion and could help and work with that student in the classroom.
So the tier two instruction done by the classroom teacher, that intervention is over and above the amount of normal reading instruction the child would receive?
It is. Within a, within a tier three model, it would be above what, like 180 minutes. It would be an additional. But a lot of schools are, I mean, that I've talked to know that and so they're working that within their master schedules. We did last year. We worked, we worked within our master schedule for those minutes.
So the principals are going to be creative in being able to do some of those smaller groups of instruction, individualized instruction during different parts of the day as opposed to just saying, hey, you go to X classroom. Which we saw, there was not a lot of fidelity district-wide on how we were utilizing those RTI positions. So we weren't owning literacy like we need to own it because we were able to say, go to, go to X classroom to get so many minutes of additional instruction.
One last question then. So for a child in need of tier two intervention services, when would that child be identified in need of those services? Where in the school year and then where in kind of the K three continuum?
So ideally, if a student is coming from pre-K or is coming from kindergarten, any of those grade levels, we can identify at the beginning of the year based on last year's data. And so instead of waiting for that assessment, we would start identifying them and working with them at the beginning of the year. The other, the other point that we would start identifying kids for tier two or tier three intervention would be that beginning of the year assessment. Generally, what they say for pre-kindergarten and kindergarten is we don't identify them for tier two until middle of the year because they have to have access to education before we can really say whether or not they're struggling.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Item B, K three MAP scores, end of year data?
As Dr. Hanson comes to the microphone, along with Dr. Kuratin, our new data guru expert. Thank you. Didn't you get hired at the last regular scheduled board meeting, Dr. Kuratin?
Thanks, sir.
And you're already, and you're already in front of the board.
I know.
Okay. Good deal. Right into the fire, right? So the measures of academic progress, y'all know we've been using the MAP within WEA here the last few years. It's kind of our localized way of seeing where we are nationally and seeing where we are with growth because, you know, the STAR EOC doesn't always give you the best accurate description of how we're doing. So we're going to turn that over to y'all to see what our end of the year data looks like. What's, one more thing before we start this, y'all do know Rose City Summer Camps is going on, so we'll use this data here to look at how those Rose City Summer Camp students performed and then we'll take another snapshot of them right when we get back to see how the, how they grew. So that's exciting. So Dr. Kuratin?
Thank you, and let me say thank you to all the board for giving us this opportunity to present this data. As Dr. Crawford said, this is kind of just a summary and overview of what we are seeing so far in our school district. And so we're going to present just a big picture overview and then we're happy to answer any questions. If you have more specific questions that we can answer tonight, I'll be happy to do so. So I'm going to start by just going over the first goal. Our first goal was to have 85 percent of K through three students, so kindergarten through third grade students at the grade level, reading grade level by spring of 2021. And so we actually chunked that up and broke that down, which I'm going to go on to in a second. But before I do that, let me just show you the data and how it compares to last year. And so up there, you'll see 2015, 2015 is kind of the 2015, 2016 school year, 2016 is this last school year, so 2016, 2017. And if you look at K through third grade, each percentage tells you that the percentage of kids are at grade level. And so what you actually see over in that percent change column is how we changed from last year to this year. So across all four entry level grades, so to speak, so K through third, we actually saw an improvement in the number of kids that were on reading, grade level in reading with a particularly large spike in second grade. So an improvement of 11 percent over what we had last year. The chart on the right actually shows you the same thing, but you'll see a couple of those, so let me break it down for you. On the x-axis, so the horizontal axis, it shows your four grades, kindergarten, first, second and third grade. And there's four, or I'm sorry, there's three bars for each grade, the beginning of the year, the middle year and the end of the year. And that's just where the kid, where the students were at the beginning, where they were at the middle and then where they were at the end of the year. So for example, if you look at the third grade red bar, which is the end of the year, you can see it's at about 44 percent, which is what the table tells you. But this is just showing you where we essentially are this year compared to last year. As it pertains to our goal, so the first goal that we have, we were actually, last year in third grade, we're at 35 percent, I'm sorry, kindergarten through third grade, our average was 35 percent. This year, that average was 38 percent, so we increased it by 3 percent, which is actually, not to confuse you, but it's actually a 10 percent increase over where we started. So we started at 35, we bumped it up by about 10 percent based on where we were last year. So it's a pretty good jump. It's not quite where we were hoping. We were hoping, based on our projections, we were hoping to be at 49 percent this year. But the good thing is, I'm going to show you this data a bit more light, but we saw steady progress across the board, which leads us to believe that if we continue to see this progress, we're going to hit our goals that we're, that we set last year. And so the first goal was to get at 49 percent. We got it 38. We saw the growth and we just want to see, continue to see more growth, as I'll show you in a minute. If we break this down a little bit more and we look at our goal 1.2, which was looking just at third grade, so what we really wanted was to be, have 45 percent of our students at reading grade level by the end of third grade this year. What we actually saw, excuse me, was an increase from 39 percent last year to 44 percent this year. So for effective purposes, we were at our goal, which was 45, we were at 44 percent, excuse me, but we were there, we showed us a pretty significant improvement, that's 5 percent, so you're talking about eight or nine percent improvement over last year in third grade only. Excuse me. So that goal we did hit and the key, like I'm going to point out here in just a second, is we saw significant growth in our students. So that's what I want to do now. I want to kind of expand it from looking at kindergarten through third grade and I want to show you, I'm going to stick with reading, but I want to show you now fourth through 10th grade as well, just so you can see the big picture. So this chart is still the same, it's set up the same way. Now you've just got a few more bars where it's showing you kindergarten through 10th grade, beginning, middle and the end of the year for every school, or I'm sorry, every, every grade. And these are averaged for, across all schools. So kindergarten represents every elementary school we have in the district. First grade's every elementary school in the district. It's just an average. And I don't want you to try to pick out individual scores there, it's not the goal of showing you this. What I really wanted to show you is that taking a snapshot of what's going on in kindergarten through third grade actually gives us a pretty good picture of what we're seeing as students move on. And I believe someone just pointed it out, but Reverend Mason, it may have been you, but if we can get, if we can improve these students early on, we're going to see them to grow, we're going to see them continue to grow later. And so that's, to me, that's what that's saying is we're seeing the growth and then it's just kind of, it's hanging out there. And so we want to continue to see that progress. And what we did see this year that we really liked is that from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, we're actually seeing growth. And that's key. If we're, if we're seeing the number of kids or the percentage of kids going, that are on grade level going down across the year, that's not what we want to see. We want to see them actually, the percentage of kids increasing so that more kids are on grade level at the end of the year than at the beginning. So we actually looked at that. We looked at the percentage of students that are on grade level relative to how they're, how much growth we're seeing. And so this chart is going to show you basically what we're seeing there. On the x-axis, so the horizontal axis, you're seeing the percent of students that are above grade level. Okay? So these are the students that basically are where we want them to be right now. On the y-axis, or that vertical axis, is the percent of students, or I'm sorry, the percent of growth achieved by students. So in other words, these are the ones where, this is the percentage we're actually seeing the growth we want to see in. And what you'll see each is about 27 dots. The blue dots represent our elementary schools, the red dots represent our middle schools and the green dots represent our two high schools. And basically, the way you can look at this chart real quickly is to look up top. The two squares or quadrants up top represent our high-growth quadrants. This is ideally where we would have every single school regardless of how they're performing. In the bottom two squares, we're seeing our low-growth quadrants. And the other way you can see it is the two left squares would be your low-performing and the two right squares would be your high-performing schools. So in the top right, you've got high-performing, high-growth schools. And then your top left, you'd have low-performing, high-growth, and you can see the rest of the squares. But what we really want to point out here, because reading is extremely important, is that all our elementary schools, I'm sorry, not all of them, but the majority of our elementary schools actually show high growth. Regardless of whether low-performing or high-performing, we're seeing that they're showing high growth, which gives us, which is exactly what we want to see. If they're not growing, that's where we start to get concerned. But we're actually seeing high growth in the majority of our elementary schools. And in fact, I didn't put the exact number up there, but if you look at the schools that are showing the least amount of growth, it still is almost 40 percent. So we're seeing at least 40 percent of our kids growing across all of our schools. And if we can see that every year or more, then we're going to hit our goal by 2021. So just for comparison, I'm going to show you the math data in comparison to reading. This is a chart that's set up the same way. It's all K through 10th grade, the beginning, middle and end of the year scores or percent of students that are above grade level. And what you may notice here right off the bat is that the scores tend to be a little bit higher in math. Our students do tend to do better there and in fact, by the end of the year, Our students do tend to do better there, and in fact, by the end of the year, you can see they're really showing pretty significant improvement over the beginning of the year. We do see a spike in third through fifth grade and in eighth grade, and so, we didn't really see that in reading. If you remember, reading was pretty consistent across the board in terms of K through 10th grade with how many kids we had on grade level. But in math, we're seeing, in fifth grade, we've got almost 60%, or I'm sorry, third and fourth grade, we've got almost 60% of our students on grade level in math, which is pretty good, if you ask me. So, this is what it looks like in the general picture. We still want to go back and look at growth, because that's what matters. And when we go back and we look at that same type of chart, so we look at the percentage of students that are at or above grade level, and then, whether or not they're showing growth, we're actually seeing more schools with high growth in math than we did in reading. But what is key again here is that it's the elementary schools. So, early on, we're seeing high growth in elementary schools in reading, we're seeing high growth in elementary schools in math as well. And so, that was really key for us, because that's necessary to achieve our goal. We actually did want to, just for the sake of understanding if it was really the case, we wanted to go back and look at growth in math and reading, and see if the students are growing more in math than reading. And the way this chart is set up is on your horizontal axis is your 11 grades, just like before, K through 10th grade. And on the y-axis is the average amount of growth. So, .50 means that 50% of our students are showing the growth that we expected them to hit. And so on, 40 would mean 40%, 60 would mean 60% of those students, et cetera. The black line represents math, growth in math, the red line represents growth in red, and each dot represents that data point for that grade. So, if you look at, for example, in kindergarten, we see that almost 50% of, or over 50% of students are showing growth in math, whereas in reading, it's slightly lower than that. And you can basically look across the board and see the clear trend. In almost every grade, we're seeing higher growth in math, yeah, in math than in reading. And especially with second, third, fourth grade, or third, fourth grade, we're really seeing a big jump there, which we'd love to see across the board with Ms. Potato's plan in reading. So, we are seeing a very, very strong trend in growth here, and what's really important is high growth will eventually equal a high score. So, in other words, high growth is going to get these students to reading where they need to be, so that ultimately, they can accomplish their goals in terms of graduating on time, passing all their tests, and moving out into the workforce and the college, university world. So, just to kind of summarize, the majority of students are showing growth in most grades in most schools. Our focus at this point, as Ms. Panetta pointed out, needs to be on improving reading in early grades, because we think if you improve reading early on, and their ability to read early on, all you're going to do is make them more successful, because it's just going to build upon that success that they've got from the early grades. So, if we can do that, I think we'll hit our goal of having 85% of students on or above grade level by 2021.
Okay, questions?
Or just a comment, maybe. So, that, I think we talked about this when we did the mid-year, when you had, go back to the, one of the graphs with the three bars for every grade level, Ms. Shoreball. There you go. So, we noticed how we had, you know, let's take kindergarten, for instance, where we were at, near 40, and all of a sudden, we had that dip mid-year, and then, we finished the year strong. Dr. Hanson, correct me if I'm wrong, you made a statement at that time, I think, that it's a curriculum alignment issue.
Right, so that speaks, right, so that speaks to the curriculum changes that Ms. Panetta was just talking about. We're making a, and to answer your question, Mr. Hager, Reverend Hager, it's really more going to be 100% rewrite, pre-K through two for sure this year, where we are realigning the curriculum. We're doing what we're calling a, I hate to use the word progressive, but what I mean by that is a developmental curriculum. I don't want to use that word, but it's, by that, I mean it's a developmental curriculum, and the content, the key core contents are taught every single six weeks. So, we're not doing it by concept, we're doing it by developmentally, and then, we're re-spiraling those in all year long. So, it's a complete rewrite in pre-K through two in math and reading. And that then goes along more with how the kids are actually being assessed in pre-K through two as well.
I'm trying to figure out how to word it to both of you. I'm trying to understand why 40% or 50% is good.
Okay, it's a good question, and when we get into the statistics, I'll let Dr. Kuratin answer, but one of the things I can tell you is because the students have a significant, many of our students have significant skill gaps. So, therefore, if we are moving the needle so that we have more of the students who are getting to, getting the year's worth of growth, then we know in a few years, we will get them to grade level, if that makes sense. So, we have two measures when we're looking at math data that we look at, that Dr. Kuratin talked about. One is, how many students did we get significant growth from? And significant would be about a year's worth of growth, despite the fact that they have skill gaps. They may not be on grade level, but we got a year's worth of growth out of them. And Reverend Mason, that's a big improvement for us, I'll tell you that in the last two years. The second measure is how many students are on grade level, and we look at both of those to determine how our students are doing.
So, it's proficiency and growth, which is what the commissioner was talking about last week.
Which equals, in the STAR world, index one and index two. So, it's not as if 50% is enough, but it is telling us that we're on the upward trend.
All right, I like that answer.
Okay.
Referring back to Mrs. Washington's question, for those students who are, and I'll just say it significantly behind, but they are improving, is there intense instruction that would be provided, or we are providing these students? And is that why we're seeing this growth?
Right, so, two things are going to need to happen at the same time that we're providing for. One is the rewrite of the curriculum and a new plan related to how we're teaching reading in our early grades, and then, providing the scaffolding within the lesson to ensure that we capture the kids. The second thing that will happen that we're not really even addressing tonight is how we're then going to have to scaffold for our fourth, fifth, and on students who didn't maybe get that phonemic awareness and those early foundational skills, so that they can decode even later in life.
Now, you mentioned something, phonemic awareness.
Oh, no.
No school districts have just gotten away from it, but children who learn to read through phonemic awareness could read.
Right, yes, that, there are basic pillars of good reading instruction. And when you have a program that's explicit about when something's supposed to happen in a specific lesson, then we can ensure that it doesn't get lost. But if we don't make it explicit, really explain to the teacher that this must be done, for example, in our lesson plan, we will start with a phonics lesson every day, so that, and then, build the lesson around that within their reading. And so, you're right, I mean, the pendulum swung to the other side for a while, and so, we're sort of reaping the, sowing what we reach related to all of that. So, we have a group of students who really aren't very good decoder, sitting in fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade.
Thank you.
I'm glad you addressed the percent rewrite. I was a little concerned, so on the, one of the first slides where it talked about, we'd gone from 35% to 38%, and I think the way the slide read, it says we made steady progress from last year, expect to see more significant gains, more significant growth this year. If we're going to be at 63% on this measure next year, we have to see phenomenal gains to get to where we are. Not moving from 35 to 38%, we're going to have to totally blow these away. And so, it sounds like the rewrite on the curriculum matches that kind of diagnosis of the problem, not, hey, we're on the right track, we'll just catch up, but no, we've got to do something fundamentally different with the way we teach reading, particularly K-2, pre-K-2. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And what we know is the research from the '90s that talked about if a student can read on grade level by third grade, how that determines their high school graduation and their going on to college. And that research, there's been a recent rewrite of that, and it still holds true.
That's right.
So, we know that having a student read on grade level by third grade is essential, and we feel it's our responsibility to make it happen. So, honestly, we're working all summer to rewrite this.
And so, I know we see math data aggregated to be on level. I mean, so, that's kind of what we see, is on level versus not on level. Do you get math data that breaks down deficiencies in the five pillars of reading instruction, so you can look and see, hey, I've got a phonological awareness problem here in first grade, I've got fluency problems in second grade? I mean, do you get, we don't need to see that data, but I just want to be assured that you see that data and are using it accordingly.
Right, so, we get a learning continuum. If I were a first-grade student and I took the math test at the beginning of the year, there is a learning continuum report that's printed out, and it tells me the exact areas where my strengths are, so that the teacher can build on that, right? We want to build on strengths, and it tells me where my areas of weakness are, so that we can then go in and spiral those in. What we see is the trend, though, is we have some deficits in the curriculum where all of our students are weak. They're all weak. And so, we, just like when we disaggregate STAR data, if we have areas across the district where students didn't do well, well, we know that's a curriculum issue, it's not an instructional issue. There was a gap in the curriculum. So, there are some significant gaps in our curriculum in pre-K through two. There are some instructional issues as well, but we're, so we're tackling both of those in pre-K through two especially this year.
And if I could add something to that, just more directly with the math testing, we can actually go in there and say, for example, like she's saying, we rewrite it, and we still see this particular class is doing really, struggling on phonemic awareness. There are skills checks that you can go in there and map, and you can basically set them up for a class or for campus, and allow a teacher to go in there and test kids and say, okay, did this student progress on this particular topic, or did they not progress? So, you don't necessarily have to go give a whole test again, as much as it's just kind of giving this short little mini-assessment to, exactly, to specifically assess whatever your concern is.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. We'll move on to public participation. Board wishes to hear the thoughts and concerns of the public, and as per board policy, all speakers must have submitted a speaker participation form 10 minutes prior to the start of our regular meeting. We have one speaker tonight, unless one more's come in, and that is Ms. Tia Williams. Each speaker has five minutes, and this is not a time to interact with the board, but rather to speak publicly.
My name is Tia Williams, and I'm a student at Texas A&amp;M University. I'm a master social work student, and I have a project to find a problem in the community and present that problem before a governing board, so I chose the school board. So, my topic today is the minimal use of social workers in the Tyler Independent School District. If the only task of teachers was to teach the three Rs, their job would be a lot easier. But as we know, many factors conspire to make it difficult for some young people to make it through school. Among them are poverty, substance abuse, community violence, early sexual activity, and family conflicts. Now, we face not only bullying, but cyberbullying in this technology age. 49% of all students have reported that they have been bullied, and we can only assume that there are many more that are unreported. JasonFoundation.com found that the second-leading cause of death amongst 10-24-year-olds is suicide. Eating disorders, gender identity disissues, violent homes with insufficient resources are some of the other things that students face each day. Social workers are able to partner with teachers and staff to fill in the gaps. They are professionals who are well-equipped to address the social and psychological issues that can block academic progress. Through counseling, crisis intervention, and prevention programs, they help young people overcome the difficulties in their lives, and as a result, give them a better chance at succeeding in school. Besides helping youth with traditional academic problems, social workers aid others who specific social, psychological, emotional, and physical difficulties put them at risk for falling through the cracks. These include homelessness, homeless youth, gay and lesbian youth, and young people with physical or mental disabilities. Social workers are trained to think of innovative solutions to complex problems. Their interventions often make a strong difference for people at risk for academic failure. Within the district, school social workers often handle possible cases of neglect or abuse, and these professionals often oversee compliance with law such as Section 504. School social workers are often key in the implementation of behavior management strategies within a classroom. School social workers offer crisis intervention, conflict resolution, and counseling to students to help each individual child or adolescent gain the social understanding needed to interact in this school environment and learn. School social workers also often work directly with families in order to best make assessment of behavior, learning, and social barriers to make changes to intervention plans. Additionally, families look to school social workers for help in understanding and finding resources to help students make adjustments in classrooms and at home. The coordination of resources for parents, teachers, administrators, students, and the community is also a major part of school social workers' daily routine. School social work professionals in school work with social, government, mental health, and education agencies to equip classrooms and district with resources needed to support all students. With education and training in mental health education and communication skills, professionals working as social workers in all types of schools and education environments are able to meet the needs of everyone involved in the education process for early childhood, elementary, and secondary students. A school social worker provides integral and necessary services to educators, community members, students, and parents, and families to create the best programs, plans, and participation to help all children and adolescents be successful in and out of school. There isn't much that a social worker cannot do. School social workers are licensed by the state of Texas, or whatever state they may be in, and are professionals, and are able to join in the vision of TISD to have successful outcomes. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item 10, the business legal finance consent agenda. We're going to pull BE and J. Are there any other items to be pulled? Dr. Crawford, or any board members, any comments on anything outside of BE and J before taking a motion? I'll take a motion then for items other than BE and J.
I move we approve all items under 10, aside from BE and J.
Second motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Okay, motion carries. Next up would be item B, gifts and donations.
Yes, sir. We love this opportunity to present these awesome commitments from our community in regard to providing enterprising funds to our students across the district. Tonight, we have three donations, one from the Robert E. Lee Booster Club, Robert E. Lee Dugout Club, Robert E. Lee Kickers Club, that goes to various REL activities, the REL baseball team, REL soccer team, respectively, $23,100, $16,241, and $8,000. We appreciate the booster clubs at Robert E. Lee High School.
Yes, indeed.
We do. Is there anybody here we need to thank?
If you're a part of any of those booster clubs, or maybe future members of those booster clubs, would you please stand? Ms. Ecker?
There's at least one out there.
We see you.
Shout out to the Kickers Club.
I think I'm a member of the dugout club, so I can stand up. There you go.
The, looking at that booster club donation, that is a lot of nachos for $23,000, someone who's logged sometime.
Does that come out of the concession stands on Friday nights?
That's concession stand on Friday, Saturday nights, too. Middle school games, TJC games, everything, so.
Great example of home and school working together. That's great work.
Okay, then I have, we'll take a motion for approving item B. Okay, then I have, we'll take a motion for approving item B.
I move that we accept these donations.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Burkfeld. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next will be item E, the approval of a delegate and alternate for the Tass- Tazvie Convention. So, open the floor up for discussion on this item.
Okay, now who all is going, Mr. President?
Dr. Crawford, you want to give us the list of folks who've said they're going?
Reverend Mason, Mrs. Washington, Reverend Hager, Dr. Nation, and Mr. Washman said he may be pinch hitting.
I'm a definite maybe.
So, that's who all is going. So, we've got four that are slated to go to the Tass- Tazvie Convention October 6 through eight in beautiful downtown Dallas, Texas.
Mr. President, as our new president of the board, I move that Reverend Fritz Hager serve as our delegate to the Tazvie Convention in October.
I second.
Now, when I first was named the delegate three years ago, it was because I was the most junior person on the board.
I don't think we have any discussion. We're gonna call the vote right here.
Okay, we have a second motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. We do need an alternate. Is there anybody interested in serving as the alternate?
I wouldn't mind doing that. I'd do that.
Okay. So, Dr. Nation's indicated she's willing to serve as the alternate. Can I get a motion on that? So move. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Second?
Second.
Okay. Lots of eagerness around the second for that one. Thank you. Okay, so all in favor for appointing Dr. Nation as the alternate? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Excellent. Okay, item J. Do we need a second alternate? You want to be the second alternate? Item J, Dr. Crawford.
So, three years ago, in late summer, three years ago, excuse me, the district finalized its purchase of the property just south of the Robert E. Lee High School rent property and that is Tyler Tennis and Swim. We've actually been back leasing that to Tennis and Swim while they figured out their new property situation on Old Jacksonville Highway and that actual last leasing, I think, ran out in May, first of May. Is that correct? Yeah, end of May. There you go. So, now we've actually gotten to the point where we can actually start thinking about some of the construction that's going to be occurring on that big block between Shiloh and Loop 323 in between Donny Brook and half of Red Raider Drive. So, tonight, in front of you, you have an item recommendation for the demolition of the Tyler Tennis and Swim facility at 320 Shiloh Road. Mr. Loper is here tonight if y'all have any specific questions in regard to that project.
Okay, does the board have any questions or any discussion on that item?
What, can you give a brief description of the scope of the work there?
I'll be happy to. Basically, before you have the abatement, the abatement will have to take place first before we can do any of the demolition of the clubhouse and the pool at that point. And once that's completed, we think it's only about a week and a half process to get that done. We'll start the demolition. We'll demolition the first two farthest, closest west courts. That's actually four courts closest to the clubhouse. We'll demo the clubhouse, we'll excavate the pool and we'll backfill the pool with select fill and have the lot ready for when we do our Red Raider Drive extension.
So, we'll preserve how many tennis courts?
We'll preserve eight tennis courts. We currently are practicing on eight and we'll preserve eight for our students too. That will be the four that, eight that are closest to the Donny Brook site.
Yeah. And the tennis courts, current tennis courts at Lee are right in the middle of all of the action on the construction, so that's why you're saying those are going to be the first to go.
Yeah, we're trying, we're trying to keep our entrance of Red Raider Drive as farthest west of Donny Brook that we can. We know that the city and our traffic folks will want that also. And we're also trying to, at this point, not cross our ball field in the intermittent time while we're building the new campus, keep our baseball players practicing. So, we'll, we'll kind of start at both ends of Red Raider Drive and then once in the intermittent and then we're done, we'll connect the two pieces.
Yeah, that preservation of those eight courts, Mr. Burkfeld, is temporary.
Yeah.
We don't plan on keeping those for the entire time, but we don't want to displace our tennis or baseball players for as long as we possibly have to.
Yeah, that's correct.
And has the Red Raider Drive, has that been established where exactly that's going to run?
We do have some preliminary drawings. Of course, we, we do need to have a, we've had one meeting with the city of Tyler and this was kind of before we had drawings and just let them know what we were doing. And here, this week or next, we'll have a subsequent, a subsequent meeting with them because we have some more finite plans of the location of it. We just want to ensure that everybody's on board with that as far as the entrance from Shiloh Road because we don't want to do anything twice.
Any other questions or discussion on this item?
At what point will, so is it right after the abatement, when we get everything, the site prepared, how far down the road will it be before we push Red Raider Drive through? Like, do you know timeframe generally?
Right at the end of the project.
Yeah, okay.
Very, one of the last things that we'll end up doing. Once we can move the ball field and have the ball fields, the one that's closest to the loop now, baseball field, once we have it built.
Okay.
And I do have drawings that I'm more than willing to share with the board as far as the location of the entrance off Shiloh.
And we do plan on considering the utilization of parts of that property as staging area for construction. So, there'll be some temporary drives with gravel and other, other construction type of materials that'll be ensnaking through all of that so that we can be as least invasive as possible for any student activities or instruction.
Exciting times.
Other questions or comments? I'll take a motion on item J.
I move that we approve item J of 10.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Move to item 11. We're pulling D and E. Any other items that board member or Dr. Crawford want to be pulled? If not, Dr. Crawford, any comments on A, B, C or F?
Appreciate our work with TJC as far as working with our students in the LINK program and excited about the opportunity for Edugence for a data dashboard. We've been searching and looking and craving far and wide and we think that that's something that's going to help us mine our data and manage our data and make our data transparent on the academic side. So, very excited about that.
No other comments, then I'll take a motion for approval of items A, B, C and F.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Burkfeld. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Pulling item D and E. Do we want to talk about those that's, they're listed as two separate items? I guess they're sequential, we'll take them?
Separately.
Separately?
Yes.
Okay, so then item D.
Well, we've concluded a long journey here as far as the District of Innovation Plan and as we so affectionately refer to it in this room many times, of District of relinquishing or untying some of the knots that the legislature has tied over the many years plan. So, I don't know how innovative that the actual District of Innovation Plan is as it does just give you some relief from some things that the legislature frankly doesn't have time to go back and fix. So, we're excited to bring that to the, to the, to the district today and certainly have some of those committee members here in the audience tonight. So, if you are part of those committees or that committee of the District of Innovation, would you please stand? So, thank you. The DOI committee created and voted in favor of the plan. The first draft of the DOI plan was presented to the board for review. The district required to post the DOI plan and the Tyler ISD website for 30 days. Check, that happened. The commissioner was notified of the attempt to become a District of Innovation. Check, that happened. The DOI committee held a public meeting to seek input and finalize the DOI plan and make any tweaks that the commissioner's office asked us to make and we did that. And the DOI committee did a fit vote to accept the plan. So, we are have it in front of you today. If you want to flip through that really quick, we can go to page 70. First of all, there's the District of Innovation Committee on page 72. It starts there, goes all the way over to page 73. There's the timeline on page 74. The introductory committee, or excuse me, introductory meeting went from, started in December 16th and then all the way to the day that the Board of Trustees considers action on the DOI plan and whether Tyler ISD will become a District of Innovation. So, it's been a good five and a half month project, not that we've had anything else going on during that time, but we appreciate everyone that was a part of that. So, if you'll look on page 75, just a review of some of the things that we've already talked about. The first day of instruction, the Texas Education Code, chapter 25, talks about some relief from the, from the first day of instruction. And again, we have some, some local input on this more than any, I think our, our Chamber of Commerce voted way back when, almost over 10 years ago, to go with the Texas Association of Business of recommending the statute that actually exists today of starting no earlier than the fourth Monday in August. And we don't want to go crazy on this in the future, but it does put you in a little bit of a predicament as far as being able to have some natural breaks in the year and even considering ending your school year Memorial Day if you do start that late. So, this year, I think, I think the first day of school is actually on August the 28th and so, we're not going to adjust that. Even though I think y'all's policy gives the superintendent authority to do so, we're not going to do that. So, in saying that, we're going to wind up, starting on August the 28th, but it does give us some flexibility in years past, in years future that if we want to do that, we may. Of course, we've had some discussions even with the District of Innovation Committee about some of the things we may need to consider giving up in the future if we want to end by Memorial Day that a lot of other districts do in order to end before Memorial Day. Page 76, minimum minutes of instruction. This is very important to dropout prevention programs. So, the RISE early graduation school that we have, there you go. That's what Longview calls theirs, I think we need to start calling ours that too because sometimes people just don't understand what RISE is. It's our credit recovery and it may be early graduation school. That gives us an opportunity for flexibility there with those minutes. The same thing on page 78, minimum attendance for class credit or final grade. I think even my son mentioned today that we might have, we might have a student that's a gymnast that might be going to homeschool now because he's, he's got his eyes on the Olympics. Well, we certainly want to keep our students here with us. We think it's imperative to have that flexibility there and I think this is one way that we could potentially do that for those that have some of those specialized and unique talents outside of school, whether it be acting or maybe school, sports that we don't offer with UIL. Page 79 has to deal with teacher certifications. We really think this is going to be an opportunity here for us to, to seek some innovative ways to find some teachers to put in front of our kids. Maybe those that maybe have not gone through traditional teaching programs, may have a college degree in engineering or mathematics or, or history, but just don't have that teaching certification. Being able to entice them with a, with an actual teacher salary instead of subpay to a teacher contract for a year, probationary, may be a way that we can actually recruit some talent back into our classrooms instead of just being held prisoner through the old traditional ways of certification. Doesn't mean we're going completely that way, but that is something that we do have in our DOI. Page 81 is probationary contracts. Y'all are all aware that, that chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code says that if you've taught five out of eight years in Texas education, that you are guaranteed a tenured contract after teaching one year in that school district. In other words, if we hire someone from a neighboring school district that has worked five out of eight years, we essentially get about four months to gauge whether or not we want to become married to that person. So, in this, in this instance, we've actually moved that to two years instead of the one year marriage. We actually, or the one, the four-month tryout, we're going to actually have about a 16-month tryout to see if that's something we want to commit to. There are ways for that individual to actually gain that tenured contract. It's listed on page 81. The committee was very adamant that we put some of those things in there to where we had some professional development requirements, that we also had some administrative recommendations for that to happen that just wasn't automatic. So, thank you for that.
Of course.
Yes.
If at the end of the first year that this beginning person is working for our district and that person is not living up to our standards as an exceptional teacher or quality teacher, what happens that instead of going to the two years that I have many months you said, what happens at the end of their first school year?
Just like they do now, in the best interest of the school district, we would not offer them a contract. This gives the district a little bit of leeway to not have to make that finalized decision right then. In other words, we may say, hey, you know what, there's some potential there, let's see what we can do here instead of having to make that decision just only four months into your, into our relationship. Good question. Page 82 is class size waivers for K through four. That's been a huge project for this board and the superintendent and his staff over the past three years and we've gone from having something like 50-plus waivers in the August budget workshop or September, I guess, meeting down to single digits we can count on one hand. And so, we're excited about this opportunity because our school board has made, made it important and we're saying that with the statute here is that we don't submit this to the commissioner's office anymore. In other words, y'all are the final say about holding the administration accountable, not Austin.
So, no change in our approach, just a change in our reporting requirements?
Change in the mechanics, yes, sir. No change in approach. And that's it on the actual plan.
Okay, so I guess we have two steps. One is to approve the plan and then the second is to approve the designation as a District of Innovation. So, I will accept a motion for approval of the District of Innovation Plan, item D.
I so move.
I'll second.
Ms. Washington is seconded by Dr. Nation. Thank you. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion on item E, the designation of District of Innovation?
No, the agenda item does state that we have followed all the procedures and are compliant in regard to being able to bring this in front of the board today.
Any discussion? Take a motion then?
Mr. President, I move that we accept, we approve the administration's recommendation of Tyler ISD becoming the District of Innovation.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Nation, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you to the committee for all the long hours of work and for the flexibility to be more focused on what's good for kids here in Tyler and not have to go to Austin to seek permission.
Right. Y'all've got some more projects coming up, so we've got your name and email address and phone numbers, so y'all've already been told that, but I wanted to say that publicly.
Okay, item 12, Superintendent Staff Reports, Quarterly Financial Executive Summary. Dr. Crawford?
Does anyone have anything they'd like to ask Ms. Bjork in regard to our quarterly financial executive summary?
For those of you who couldn't hear that, Ms. Bjork says we're in good shape.
Yeah, and I, and I, let me just make a comment on that. I will say that going through this before in a prior super tendency, you would have been alerted well in advance if we were doing anything that, that might have given us some concern. So, we've, you know, we've gotten the school year over with, we're wrapping it up, we're actually preparing next year's budget for you. We've had a budget workshop. We've had a budget workshop already, so we wouldn't surprise you today if we did have any concerns.
Item thirteen, local policy FNF, first reading, which is the mandatory drug testing program.
Okay, I think y'all were coached pretty hard in regard to drug testing at the last meeting. We've actually got policy put in front of you today for the first reading. Greg and I have already noticed, and Gina have already noticed some things that we'll probably wind up tweaking. We'll communicate those. If you see anything in the drug testing policy, proposed drug testing policy for athletes, be sure to contact myself or Mr. Priest or Gina.
Any comments or questions for Dr. Crawford on that while we're in public forum?
I thought that guy's wackering out. Is she okay? If she's not, don't say anything.
No.
I'd add just one comment. In reviewing the policy, it seemed like education got pushed further back rather than brought further forward, where there didn't seem like there was education beyond here, the consequences of what's just happened until the third failed test. And so I support the policy aim of being restorative and educational and not punitive. And so I'd encourage, as we look through the next reading of the policy, that some form of education be brought earlier into the process so that a child who doesn't understand the consequences outside of their athletic participation can understand the consequences of what's happening in their body and what will happen to them long term, that that part could be brought forward. The part at the end, which was the mandatory treatment, I thought that was sufficient. It just seemed like we were light on the front end in terms of helping kids understand the risks that they're taking.
I think there's resources that are available, just like there will be on the back-end requirements. I think there'll be some available community resources that will be least invasive to the district's budget that we could probably access for some of those counseling things in regard to alerting students and their parents about the dangers of drug use.
Okay, any other discussion? Item fifteen, future business.
Board workshop on the tenth, Wayne D. Bocher's Bocher Center for Exceptional Programs graduation on July twentieth. I hope that the board can attend. Those that are in attendance tonight, my staff, the expectation is that on July twentieth, you will be at the graduation ceremony. I'm hoping that you'll have that on your calendar. And then July twenty-seventh, a regular meeting traditionally for those of y'all that are in the audience tonight and watching on on the live feed and on the on the tape. July twenty-seventh, we have that meeting. It's been normally pushed back towards the back end of July for for summer vacation. So I hope we can catch you can catch us then as well.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us to the last item on the agenda, which is adjournment. I have a motion for adjournment.
Mr. President, I move we adjourn.
Mason, many seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.